Like to call to order the City of Sagittuck City Council Workshop for April 23rd, 2025. Should we address Joe's absence before we call rolls so that we'll have a quorum when we call roll?
Sure, the mayor.
Okay, so Councilmember Clark is unable to be with us and has requested us to accommodate his participation remotely due to a disability which we have allowed in the past. Jake is on and can kind of walk us through that.
Yeah, so there has been a request submitted in writing and at this point, it has been also included a request for a reasonable accommodation which would be remote participation. And so, under current Michigan law, all that needs to happen at this point is the council can approve the request for an accommodation as it has done so in the past.
Great. So can I get a motion to approve Joe's request for an accommodation to participate remotely?
Just a quick question, Mayor. I'm just trying to understand for future reference, how we establish quorum and then thus are allowed to vote?
Oh, that's a good question.
Sorry Jake, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to understand how we achieve quorum and then allow Mr. Clark, who I fully support attending the meeting remotely.
No, I don't necessarily know that a quorum of the council necessarily has to approve this disability. I think it could potentially be made through the moderator of the meeting, which would be Mayor Anderson. Otherwise, I think for these purposes, you could also just have Joe join in the vote.
It almost seems to me, and once again, I don't want to overwork this, that Mr. Clark has been admitted to the meeting under an accommodation and he's just able to participate in roll call. Would that be the more clean way to do it? Or I defer to you Jake, of course, but.
Well, I think there needs to be some consensus and I don't necessarily know that the council has to approve it. So I think we can, you know, as long as Mayor Anderson agrees with this accommodation as, you know, moderator of the meeting, she can agree to that accommodation and then we can go ahead from there.
Okay, apologies for taking us down a rabbit hole.
Now, it's good to, Russ?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. We've had this happen once before. I think it was alluded to by Jake. I don't remember the particular situation or person, however, and again, nothing, this is not anything to do with Joe in particular or Councilmember Clark particularly, but I'm just thinking, in terms of that accommodation, I know that there's a, through the open meetings, Joe or Jake helped me here, where the regulations exist around this, is that the accommodation can only be granted for certain situations, medical situations. It cannot be granted for, I'm not able to get to the meeting because I can't, you know, I'm out of town or whatever the case may be, which is, happens to us, you know, pretty regularly. So my question really is, what level of information can we be given to an assurance that this is an exceptional situation? The email, maybe there may be information in that email that should not be shared in public, but where I'm going with this is, at what point do we, who makes the decision that the accommodation is appropriate given the situation?
If it's helpful, and I can explain this because I don't mind disclosing.
Does my question make sense?
Yes. I was actually the first one to get this exemption. It was my first city council meeting when I had COVID. And the Michigan, state of Michigan made, provided for during the COVID pandemic, provided for an exception to open meeting acts for people who needed to be, you know, get an exemption due to COVID. So, and then we've had one other council member have the same exemption for the same reason.
And just to be clear here, I, my understanding is that OMA has subsequently been amended, that it doesn't recognize that as a reason for remote participation, but there's an attorney general opinion out there that says the Open Meetings Act does not supersede or preempt the Americans with Disabilities Act and medical conditions and disabilities, which would include something like COVID, have been recognized in this, in this attorney general opinion, as a disability and remote participation is a reasonable accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act to allow an affected member of a public body with some kind of qualifying medical condition or disability to participate in that meeting.
So I'm comfortable allowing Mr. Clark to participate in this meeting and accommodate his requests for an exemption.
Madam Mayor, so I just noticed that Councilmember Stanton has joined remotely. She has not requested an accommodation.
He has not, and I'll get to that next.
Yeah, I support based on the council's guidance of Mr. Clark participating fully in the meeting.
Okay, and I have texted Gregory just to see if he's coming.
I saw him outside the flower shop on my walk down here, so I don't know what's going on with that.
Okay, so then can we get a motion to excuse Councilmembers Stanton and Peterson from?
I think, Mayor, you need probably a formal roll call this.
Oh, right, I'm sorry. Thank you, appreciate that. So, Jamie, will you call the roll?
Clark?
Yes.
Boxey?
Dean?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stanton? Gardner?
Say yes for attendance or yes?
This is just for attendance, yeah.
Here.
Okay, now may I get a motion to excuse Lauren and Chris?
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmembers Chris Peterson and Councilmember Lauren Stanton from today's workshop.
I will second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 All right. Any changes to the agenda? Any public comment on agenda items only? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to make a public comment? All right. That takes us to item number five, approval of the regular city council meeting minutes. You get a motion?
Mayor, I'll motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of April 14th, 2025 as presented.
Second.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Okay, on to discussion items. The Mount Bald Head restroom replacement bids, page eight of our packets. Are you teaming that up or John or?
Yeah, I certainly, certainly can, Mayor. As you know, we've been, well, initially at Parks and Public Works Committee, based on a recommendation to you, recommended replacing the bathrooms at, restrooms at Mount Bald Head. Obviously, we've discussed that they are in significant need of the repair or replacement. Several months ago, you approved an engineering proposal for engineers to design the bathrooms and seek bids. We've, we have sought bids and have those and Mr. Boxey, your contracted engineer is here today to present the bids that we received to you. We've also had some discussion with you as a council that we would be engaging with the area tribes to go over the project and get any feedback from them and how we might best approach this project. We've had a couple of very great and positive meetings with them and I think we're ready to proceed with awarding a bid if you're satisfied. So if it's okay, Madam Mayor, we turn it over to Mr. Boxey to go over the bids.
Yeah, thanks. Our bid opening and summary and tabulation is pretty straightforward. I think you're all kind of familiar with that process. In this case, we haven't worked with all of the low bidders. I'm going to make that plural for now at least. So we did our normal due diligence to follow up on references and kind of ask around the industry just to get some feedback. And the three bidders that we're presenting are all around the $300,000 bid amount. We were expecting bids in the range of something 250 to $350,000 and they ended up right in the middle of that. So we were pleased with that. We got seven bids, which is great in the current construction market where we're at. And those low three are all right around that $300,000 plus or minus. Comfortable with any of the three. We did note the lowest bidder, McGraw Construction, did submit a sheet with their bid that had some qualifications on it. Some of the things that were not included, some exceptions to their bid. We had a few, few kind of unknowns on this project, which, which isn't all that uncommon. In this case, they were relatively small. We didn't break those out of the bid. In hindsight, I might because it did cause a little bit of confusion, but again, they're pretty minor dollar items. So I, in addition to our normal bid tabulation, did kind of a side-by-side comparison of the two lowest bidders. McGraw Construction in Midwest. Midwest didn't qualify their bid. McGraw had some qualifications. So the two are about $2,500 apart. With the qualifications, if, if things go perfectly, you would be a little bit less by going with McGraw. If, if life happens, which we expect some of that too, Midwest is going to be a little bit, a little bit cheaper just because they have included some of these unknowns in their bids. I can run through those with you. Both bidders did include an asbestos survey, which is required to demolish a building, even, even a simple building such as the restrooms. Neither one included asbestos abatement. If, if that survey does find that there is asbestos-containing materials that need to be abated, that's hard to quantify before you have a survey, but no one, I think, is anticipating that we're going to find much. There just isn't a whole lot of insulation or other materials that we would normally find asbestos in this building. It's just a step that needs to happen to get the official approval from the, from Eagle to proceed with demolition. Exploratory digging, we know we're going to have some of that. McGraw included six hours in their bid and anything over and above that would be just about $1,500 an hour. Midwest included exploratory digging in their bid for the work required. And that, that is really related to the water and sewer services. We don't have great records, might not come as a shock to anybody. We don't have great records for, for what's going on kind of in the, in the Mount Bald Head area and where exactly the, the service connections are connected to the, to water and sewer mains. We have a reasonable understanding of where the mains are, but how we get from A to B is, is what we were hoping to lock down as, as part of our, our work here. Again, with some consultation with the tribe, we'll, we'll be looking for their involvement with, with all of this. But, but we've come up with some, some ways to try and mitigate some of those concerns. Regardless, there, there will be some, some digging involved. And then same thing with sanitary sewer. So if everything goes according to plan, again, the, the bids are as presented, 295,475 versus 298. If, if some of that work does need to happen, which we anticipate some of it will, the bids are somewhere probably between comparable and Midwest maybe being a little bit less. So it boils down to, we've, we haven't recommended one over the other. Boils down to kind of what, what's your, what's your risk tolerance? Midwest is probably a little less risk averse. You, there's less upside, less downside. McGraw, you might, you might have some savings if things go well. I might stop there and open it up for questions, anything I might have glossed over.
Joe, I'm going to call on you first, since you're not in the room. Do you have any questions or comments?
I do. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, John, for the, for the overview of the bid. My only, my only question, I think you touched on this, is, and by the way, I want to thank everybody for allowing me to attend remotely. You don't want to share what I have, so, or I don't want to share what I have with you. It's not pleasant. John, my only question, I think you touched on this, would be the above and beyonds. Are they comparable across both Midwest and McGraw? As an example, if asbestos abatement and remediation is required, do we know that the, the hourly fees that would be incurred by both of the two bidders would be roughly the same? Or is there any, any, any difference there in terms of, I'm just trying to think, you know, if the, if the project does escalate and we know that things come up that you didn't plan on, you know, whether or not we're still looking at comparable fees for the above and beyond?
Yeah, good question. If, if the asbestos survey does find something that needs to, needs to be handled, these are both general contractors. Either one would need to contract with an asbestos abatement company. So the, the cost would be, you know, related to who, who they hire and each contractor could potentially hire the exact same company to do that work. So I wouldn't necessarily use that as a differentiator. I think they're, they're comparable from that respect. That brings up another one that I, that I should mention. Our, our normal recommendation for construction is set aside, plan on about 5% for contingency. In this case, we have some, some things that we already know we're going to be doing with, with things like ground penetrating radar and some other things to try and work through some of the, the cultural sensitivities of the site. So something on the order of 5 to 10% is probably appropriate. And that should cover every, you know, foreseeable, at least normal things that we might run into.
Gotcha. And, and things like just standard labor costs and stuff for overages are probably, would you say they're going to be comparable across both bidders? I don't know if that's called out in the, in the bid or not. I see, you have one for 1450, right, for digging?
Right, right. And we have a firm cost and both of those top line costs do include all of the labor and, and everything. Basically, that doesn't show up below. I will also add that I reached out to both because this bidding happened in February and we all kind of know what has happened with the international trade and tariffs and everything in the last few weeks. I did, I did reach out to both contractors a week or two ago and, and they both, to my surprise, confirmed they, they checked in with their suppliers and as of now at least, both of these numbers are still good, but there could be some cost escalation still between now and when we actually make an award and get materials ordered. So that would fall within that, that contingency money too. That, that's obviously outside of anyone's control at this point, at least anybody that's on this call.
Thank you, John.
Do you have questions?
I do. Thank you very much. I would like to get an update. It was mentioned in the memo with the packet regarding a conversation with the tribes. It'd be curious as to the extent you could share anything, what their perspective was on complete demolition and replacement as opposed to repair. Not just this, but, but this was the primary focus of that discussion, right, was the bathrooms or just all of Bald Head?
The restrooms in the upper platform were discussed.
So focusing on the bathrooms, what was the tribe's perspective on complete demolition, tearing out cement, asbestos abatement, et cetera, as opposed to just simply rehabbing what we have?
So we discussed the project that the council asked us to move forward. So we discussed restroom replacement. They didn't have opposition to that. And we kind of discussed where we're at as far as that we hadn't even, you know, the council hadn't approved bids yet and that we anticipated coming to actually to, you know, a meeting on Monday and doing that. They didn't have a concern with us moving forward with bids, but we didn't specifically discuss rehabbing the existing restrooms with them.
Okay. And this is a question for the DPW. Have there been any issues with the current service in terms of water or sewage or electricity at that building? In other words, is there anything that is, other than the fixtures, have there been issues?
Yeah, just minor stuff, leaky faucets, just outdated with the building itself, nothing really of significance with the service lines or anything like that.
Okay, so no issue with water coming in and out or sewage coming in and out, electricity or anything like that?
No, there's nothing, nothing indicating that the sanitary sewer or the water service going in would be anything that would need replacement, but you never know until you start.
Right, the building is closed in the winter, is closed fall to spring, right? Is it even open yet for the season?
Nope, we're getting water turned on next week.
Okay, all right, thank you. And also too, the cost for this is all coming out of city funds, right? This is not underneath a donation or?
General fund dollars.
All right, so where I'm going with this is, we got here, in my opinion, as a result of the initial AT&amp;T offer to replace the bathrooms with a larger facility, which of course, that didn't happen for various reasons. So I still think we need to have a $300,000 investment. And John, also to clarify, that 5 to 10% amount, that will be on top of the bids, right, for a contingency, right?
Correct.
Yep, so we'll add 30,000 to each of these, each of these bids, roughly, on average. So we're talking $330,000. Up to, right. So where I'm going with this is, I think we still need to have, $330,000 is a lot of money for bathrooms, for a two-stall bathroom, which in my opinion, could very easily be upgraded and fixed with current facilities for a much less expensive cost in the money. And I don't know what that looks like in terms of expense, but probably far less than a complete replacement and would not be a degradation of service or accommodations for people that go to Mount Bald Head. And that money that's coming out of the city coffers, you know, whether it's up to $330,000, even if you were to say $100,000 to repair what's there and upgrade it, that $230,000, using my scenario, could very well be used for additional improvements at Mount Bald Head to the picnic pavilion, to the landing up at the top of, of the dune. I, I just think, I'm personally not comfortable approving this level of expenditure for what's essentially a two-stall bathroom. That could use some help, certainly. It needs to be fixed. It needs to be upgraded. I would like to see, and actually not even like, I need to see a scenario where we could be looking at upgrading what we have, which in respect to the tribes, in my mind, would probably be just given all things considered, a rehab of what we have is probably less invasive and less of an issue than completely tearing, even though they said they're okay with that. I think the less we do, the better over at Mount Bald Head, given everything that we've learned. I just think financially, we've got other priorities that really could use the additional $230,000 in my scenario for other projects. I, I'm just not comfortable with this amount of investment in that particular facility for replacement.
Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question for John, maybe it goes directly to Scott. Your report mentions that we do have some experience with Mujin. Is that fleece experience or city experience with their projects?
If it's in my, yeah, in my letter, yes, fleece, fleece and vandit break, yes.
Okay. Scott, you're not familiar with their work? No, okay, thanks. My, my initial reaction is, I, I think, you know, we definitely can expect some surprises, you know. So the, the low bidder with 19 exceptions, I think we will find some exemptions. It'll be, you know, there will be some complexity to the project that I think we will likely find. I'm happy to hear from the other members of council on Monday, but I'm prepared to go forward and approve this with either Midwest or, or Mujin. I think I'm leaning toward Mujin, given that it's, what do we have, you know, maybe a $4,000 delta in, in the two bids. And the Mujin firm looks a little bit more capable, based on fleece's experience with them doing a good job. I would, once again, like to compliment you, Mayor, and you, Ryan, for engaging with the tribe. I think it's very important for them to have a single point of contact with city leadership. And I think the optics are correct for you as the chair of our board to be interfacing with them. So I thank you for, for showing them that, that level of, of respect and, and that level of, of attention as we move forward on this project. I'm, as I said, I'm prepared to vote yes on this on Monday, because when I do look at our, our city's priorities, the top priority for Parks and Public Works or Parks and Recreation that we all agreed to at our strategic planning session is here, constructing Mount Bald Head bathroom. So I will be supporting it on Monday.
Joe, further comments or questions from you?
No, I will. I, I actually appreciate all the dialogue and I appreciate Council Dean's position because I think it's very close to where I stand as well. I'll be supporting it. I did a little, little clarification, however, from Council Dean. You said you support the Mujin?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm open-minded to either of those bids. I guess the one thing that, you know, with a $4,000 delta between Midwest and Mujin is the fact that, that John, John's firm has some.
I see.
Which does increase my confidence, given that I do think it will be a complicated project. And that's why the low bidder in this case, I think with the 19 exceptions, may not fully understand how complicated the project is. And, you know, as, as Councilmember Gardner alluded to, during the initial AT&amp;T work over there, we learned that it is a complicated site. So I think, I think the high bidder in this case is probably the, the appropriate one for me to vote for at this point.
I'll, I'll just add, and Scott definitely appreciate that. I'll just add that we, we definitely did hear very good things about all, all three, honestly. And, and the list of projects that Midwest submitted was, was exactly what we were looking for. They even did some projects for other communities that we, we work with. They just happen to not be fleece and vandit break projects. So yeah, I feel comfortable recommending any, any of the three. I think from a technical standpoint, you're going to be happy with any of the three.
Well, that's, that's reassuring, John. Thank you. I, I think I still do, given the relatively small delta between the three. I think I, I lean toward the two that don't have the, that don't have the exceptions built in because I do think we will encounter some of those things.
Great. Anything else, Russ? Yep?
Yeah, I just wanted to revisit this. So I, I have no issue with the contractor recommendations. This is a good conversation about who might be the most viable contractor to do the work. I get back to the scope of this and frankly, given financially where the city has some investments we have to make on infrastructure, of which this is part of infrastructure, of course, I think, I'm personally feeling like we're going a bit far for something that, in my mind, is not that complicated. And I don't remember the complications that we talked about in terms of replacing the entire site, but how could it be complicated to replace, fix some holes in the roof, put in a fountain or put in a water fountain there, paint the building, replace the toilets, replace the sink, replace whatever else needs to be replaced? How complicated could that be? It's also going to save this, save the city, you know, probably $200,000 and that's probably a conservative number and money that could be invested elsewhere in parks. I, I just, I really think if we, down the road, if we look back on this and we spend, you know, $330,000 in worst-case scenario on this project, people are going to say, you spent $330,000 on that bathroom and your, your parking lot is awful. Your patio enclosure is not in good shape. There's other improvements that need to be made over there and you spent $330,000 on bathrooms. The optics on that, I'm not comfortable with that. I think a more reasonable approach is, would be to have a scenario, say, where we looked at simply rehabbing the bathrooms and maybe that's not the optimal approach. Maybe that is not something that can be done easily. Again, I don't know. I don't have the information. That's what I'm looking for is, what is A, B, and C? We're just looking at A. We're looking at the top-notch approach and I'm saying, from a financial standpoint, we should be looking at, okay, what are plans B and C? Could there are other, other options for us to consider? I mean, this is getting up in the scope of what the playground cost is.
John?
Getting up there.
It's all right, Madam Mayor. John, can you kind of talk about like with, you know, the type of materials that are being used? You know, obviously the, you know, brick is proposed here, like what, what's the lifespan of this restroom replacement? And then can you kind of talk about some of the kind of ADA accessibility pieces that are incorporated here as well?
Yeah, yeah. Russ, to your point, it, it blows my mind on a cost per square foot basis how, how expensive these, these relatively small restroom buildings are. My, my architect kind of brought me back into line by, by saying, you know, imagine your house, the most expensive part of your house is, you know, kitchen and bathrooms, that's the entire building. And not only that, but we're, we're using, you know, brick and block. We're using commercial-grade materials, obviously, municipal-grade materials. So this has a, this has a lifespan of, you know, 50-plus years for the most part. You, you may have to, you know, redo the roof in 30 or something like that, like you would, because it is just a shingled roof. But for the most part, this is, you know, the, the same type of a lifespan that you would expect to get out of your, your other municipal facilities, whether it's underground construction or, or, you know, a fire station, things like that. So very, very robust. One of the other things that does drive the cost is, is meeting the energy code. We do have it set up for year-round use. That's something that would be a little trickier to do with a rehab option. I'm not here to tell you one or the other is, is the better way to go. It's really just, what do you want? What, what kind of level of project do you want? Either, either is definitely feasible. I can, I can just tell you that this is in line with, with other projects of this nature that we've seen. We just finished one in Hudsonville last year that was around $300,000 as well. So very similar, a lot of similar details and fixtures and things like that. But yeah, it's intended to be open to, you know, a little vandal-resistant and, and, you know, we know it's in the public space, so it's going to get abused a little bit more than, than your bathroom at home.
And the ADA issues to Ryan's other question, John, can you?
Oh, yes, thank you. Barrier-free is probably one that would be trickier to do in a renovation option. All of the, you know, door widths and fixture locations, room sizes, all of that is, is fully barrier-free. It has to be to meet current code.
So, so John, at that point, I was asking the same question. Thank you, Mayor, for asking that. So if we touch that building, we have to make it ADA compliant. Is that what you're saying?
I think anything that rises to the level of requiring a building permit, you could certainly paint it. You could certainly reshingle the roof, things like that, some of the cosmetic things. As you start making any kind of structural repairs and upgrades, I would, I would really recommend that you consider barrier-free as part of that.
But if we were to replace the faucets, for instance, or the sink or the toilets, would that then put us into that, put us into that level too?
Yeah, I, I couldn't speak on behalf of the code official, but I think, I think those types of things, just basic maintenance and replacement. just basic maintenance and replacement, I think you could get away from, uh, triggering, you know, any kind of a barrier free review, a, a, a code required, you know, permit. You wouldn't need a, a building permit for, for replacing faucets.
Okay. The other, uh, you mentioned the durability of the new building, uh, brick construction, et cetera. Do we know how old the, Scott, do we have any idea how old the building is? The building is, does it not predate Bruce Simonson?
It's old enough for a, you know, to consider what that building actually is. That used to be a pump, uh, station that was located across the street, um, that, that discharged sewage uh, into the river back in the fifties, I think, and prior to, and, and that was acceptable. Um, so to, in my mind, you know, I, I completely understand where you're coming from. Um, you know, we just got pricing on a, on a house build and, and the square footage pricing is, is, it is unchangeable right now. Um, I wish that were lower, but, uh, in my mind, it's going from a, something that really just wasn't, it was kind of salvaged at the time. So it was a, a pump station that, that discharged into the river. It was kind of drug across the parking lot and turned into a usable restroom facility. Uh, so to go from that, salvaging that old pump house to a commercial grade building, um, is just a world of difference. And, you know, we hear all the time, you know, from multiple residents on Park Street, visitors alike, uh, all over the place that, um, you know, Mount Bald Head is really one of the, the gems of our community.
Probably the town.
Absolutely, without question. So to me, even, you know, respectfully, even refurbishing what's there, it's still just going to be a rustic old pump house. That was kind of like a shed essentially that was repurposed where to take it from that to, you know, a commercial grade building is, um, it's just not even comparable. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. And, and to your point, rehabbing an old building is not a bad thing. Really not a bad thing. That is the nature of that park is this to be rustic. It's been that way in my memory as long as I've been here. And obviously at least back to the fifties with the old pump house building that's been used for the bathrooms. And again, um, I'm probably on the short side of this argument, but only being presented with an opportunity of $330,000 to completely replace it as opposed to what are our other options? Like for instance, the year round use, we have never had that open. That, that's going to be another level of responsibility for the DPW to have to maintain that during the winter month. I'm over there a lot and frankly, during the winter time, there's just not that many people there. And I would still recommend that we stay with our current process and that's close it at the end of the season and open it in the spring. To make it accommodation for, for all four seasons is, sounds like it's going to increase the cost quite a bit. And so what would that scenario look like if we didn't have that available, you know, 365 days a year? And again, I'm very.
We did keep that in mind, you know, when we were going through the design phase of this, I think John and I had a lot of conversations of, you know, what are some of the, the pieces that would be needed to keep it, uh, open year round? And, and, you know, with the high efficiency, you know, like Fujitsu type of heater, heating systems that exist now. Um, you know, the cost at the time, I can't remember what they were exactly, but it was very minimal. Um, so we, we kind of planned on having the capability with the new building to keep it open, you know? Like during COVID, everyone wants to go outside, social distance. We have a mild winter. People want to get outside and get active. So to have that capability. Um, and then if, you know, if, if we, time goes on and we just see that it's not getting used, and we can tell, public works, you know, there's still like blue toilet bowl cleaner in all the toilets because they hadn't been used from the day before. So, um, so we can tell if they're being used or not. And if they're not being used and it's not worth the additional, you know, cost, then we, we can revert back to closing it down for the year.
Yeah, that good. And, and I, Mayor, I, I'll just finish with this comment. So, um, it's pretty clear where I stand on this is I, I'm just disappointed that we don't have different scenarios that we can evaluate other than just the plan A. That's all we've got to look at. I am in full support of doing something over there. I have been in full support of this since day one. Again, where I'm disappointed is that we just don't have a range of choices and options that we can look at to say, okay, how can we make this cost less, especially it's coming completely out of the city's coffers? Again, I, there's going to be some optics around this. You spent $330,000 on those bathrooms over Bald Head and the parking lot isn't fixed and blah, blah, blah. That's not going to look good on, on the city.
So we did spend a fair amount of time earlier in this process talking. So I, I think, you know, we, it's not like we haven't evaluated different options and, and the consensus of council has been to move forward with a new bathroom. So.
I'm not arguing against new bathrooms. I'm arguing against the cost of doing this and are there, are there other alternatives we should be looking at? I don't recall us having that conversation.
I, I guess, you know, my recollection dates back to, well, actually dates back many years through our strategic surveys, you know, for our planning sessions. One of the top items is frequently from our residents been, uh, do something about the bathrooms at Mount Bald Head.
Right on.
And, you know, I think we're listening to the residents. Um, it clearly has come through our strategic planning session that, that a, a new bathroom at Mount Bald Head uh, has been identified as a priority. You know, nobody likes spending money, but as, as we know, you know, there are ADA requirements now.
ADA requirements are, are.
And yeah, that, that's important, of course. And then there's also the need to, you know, build a piece of infrastructure that is lasting, you know? So at some point you need to, you know, say, you know, how much more money are we going to throw at something that was, that's well past, it's.
We've thrown no money at it. We've thrown no money.
Well, and, and indeed, that's probably part of the problem. Why, why not, why now we are facing a bill for it? Okay. So that, so that's, you know, sometimes that's what happens when you, when you ignore problems for too long.
So I think we've pretty much heard from folks. Joe, do you have anything else to add before we move on?
No, I, I think these are really good discussions and I love the fact that, you know, we're trying to be fiscally responsible here and make the right decision. The only thing I'll kind of throw out there is, and I'm, I'm not a big advocate for spending taxpayer dollars. I, I'm much more on the conservative side. When I do look at a project like this and I look at the, um, the current state of that, that, that building facility, and I understand from our strategic planning, the direction we want to go on upgrading and really giving a, a site like Bald Head, right? The, you know, the top, basically make it a top destination for tourists and residents alike. I also look at this and I say, yeah, we can probably save some money, but I have, I suspect that. And again, I'm not being critical here of, of Council Gardener's. I, I, as I said, I really like his, his approach and his thought process. But I'm also thinking about this in terms of the sheer economics and looking at the escalating price of, of, you know, what it costs to take on these projects. And if we were to kick the can, yes, we can make it nice, but can we make it that nice? And if we're going to kick the can and revisit this in five years, we may find that we're, we've gone from 300,000 up to 500,000, especially looking over the last five years, how much building prices have escalated. So I'm, I'm kind of in the, in that camp of let's, let's do it and let's do it right. That's what we discussed during our strategy session and, um, yeah, so I don't know if that helps or not, but that's kind of where my head's at.
Do you have what you need, Ryan?
Uh, yeah, I think you'd probably be prudent. I think John, maybe we'll follow up with the, well, it sounds like. So there was mention of maybe pursuing ordering the bid to Midwest or, uh, Mujin. Um, if that's the, and sends us direction to go, I think John would probably want to, uh, double check with both of them that, uh, you know, they're still would be able to, uh, make that project happen this year. I know, I think he's, he's heard from at least one of them, um, before we, you know, kind of bring that forth Monday. So we'll check in on that. And, and these dollars, uh, you know, the, uh, this, this project was budgeted for this fiscal year. So we do have sufficient dollars if you are ready to move forward and, um, we'll, we'll set this up for Monday and, and wait your direction.
All right. Great. Uh, thanks. Good discussion. Let's move now to, uh, the draft, uh, budget for the next fiscal year. And I will start with a thank you to everybody on staff for, uh, your work on this.
Thank you, Mayor, for that. And yes, this is a, by far a huge team effort. Um, and we'll kind of get into, you know, some of what that, that process looks like. And frankly, uh, you'll see here in a, a few slides that, um, you know, we just talked about one project. Well, your, your, your priorities that you, uh, established for a next fiscal year involve a lot more projects. And so you'll see in this budget proposal that, uh, we, we worked to, uh, include, uh, the priorities that, that you've established. But, uh, this is kind of a, uh, a working process where, you know, things aren't finalized yet. This is kind of a presentation to kind of give you some, some highlights and details of the, the draft budget that's before you. And we'll kind of walk through, uh, the remaining steps here before, before things are finalized. So as we kind of get into, uh, you know, the, the budgeting profit process, next slide, Jamie, we, we, we look at, uh, what is our real, you know, purpose here? What, what, why do we need, uh, a budget? Well, one, there obviously there's a, a state law and, and you as, as council members, um, have to, uh, approve giving us appropriations and, and indicating what, uh, you're comfortable, um, you know, spending, uh, in a particular fiscal year. And so a budget kind of allocates our public resources over time and amongst public operations. Um, so it kind of lays out you as policymakers, what you're comfortable with, uh, your, um, resources being spent on. Uh, the budget helps provide accountability to the public for the expenditures of public funds. So we're letting folks know, uh, this is how we're intending to spend, uh, the dollars that we're bringing in. And, and, um, throughout the year then we're providing you as well as the public with updates on, on how we're spending those dollars. And then everything is also audited at the end of a fiscal year as well. Um, and then having a budget certainly helps us maintain the financial stability of, of the city and knowing, uh, what our resources are and where we want to deploy them and, and, uh, what do we need in the future to, uh, uh, to meet the, the community's needs. So if you look at the next slide here, uh, and I, I printed a copy of this presentation for you. Uh, we will have a copy of this presentation as well as the, the line by line detail placed on our, our website. So the, the community is fully aware. I'll share it in my community report, um, uh, as well. But really the budget process started back, uh, in December, January, when, uh, you all indicated that you wanted to, again, um, you know, reach out to the community to find out what their, um, uh, priorities might be for the next fiscal year. What, what are the things that they want you to, to focus in on, uh, accomplishing? And, and so we took those survey results and we had a full day strategic planning session and we, uh, all got together in February where, um, we kind of discussed the progress towards this fiscal year's priorities. And then, uh, you all had some discussion about what you would like to see occur, uh, next fiscal year. And then we took that, uh, kind of compiled that into some graphics. And then we had some workshop meetings, um, where you all took a look and kind of had some discussion about, well, can we remove anything or we're, we're struggling to remove some things? Should we set the highest priorities? And then it didn't quite land there. And so we, we have a pretty robust sheet of, of priorities that, uh, we've brought forth to you, um, today. But, um, again, this is, uh, an ongoing process. So after we, you establish your priorities and then agreed on what they, they should be for next, next year, we, uh, John and, and Moxie and Scott worked to, uh, update the capital improvement plan, uh, and presented that to you, uh, in February, and then you ultimately approved that, uh, in March. And then, uh, from there, uh, staff, you know, took all of that information and, uh, each department head, uh, met with myself and the treasurer and submitted their specific department budget, uh, requests and, and needs based on your priorities and their, uh, operational, uh, needs and their, um, you know, kind of professional expertise on what they think was best to, uh, to include. Um, I have then compiled all of that and kind of evaluated it and have submitted that all to you. And that's what we're doing today is kind of a presentation on the budget. But from here, it's really a process where, uh, each of you will have an opportunity to meet with myself and the treasurer. If you have specific questions and we're happy to get into as much detail as you would like. If you want additional, uh, workshops as a, as a council, we're happy to, to set those up and have as many as you'd like on that. Uh, and then eventually we have to get to a point where we're presenting a, a, a final, uh, document, uh, to the public, uh, in the form of a public hearing where we post, you know, put notice in the paper, let folks know what the, uh, the tax rates are going to be and, um, hear from the public. And then you ultimately make a decision whether or not to, uh, to adopt, um, the budget for next fiscal year. And so you have to do that by June 30th. So, um, I shared this, this next slide with, uh, all of you, uh, at your strategic planning session, but it really kind of, uh, gets into kind of this, this tug and pull that, that you are all wrestling, wrestling with as policymakers and that the community is always wrestling with. And, and depending on who you are, you, 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 you probably, you know, uh, view this, this differently. And, you know, the point of it kind of says, you know, that, you know, if you, if you want, you know, low services or low fees or no fees and, but you want all the services and you're not willing to also have some, some growth in your community or, or density, um, that having all three of those things really just doesn't exist. There, there's trade offs, right? If we, if we don't have growth or further development, um, and we still want those stable services, then we're, you're probably, you know, paying higher taxes or probably more in fees. If, um, you know, you're wanting, you know, low density and you also want the low taxes. Well, then, you know, there's some service cuts that you have to kind of evaluate and, and things you have to be comfortable with letting go of. Um, if you're wanting those stable services and, but still want, you know, low taxes, well, then there's kind of some more density that's involved in, in growth and construction. So these are the things that you're all wrestling with and, and, and I, you know, we as staff look to you as our policymakers to, to give us the direction and what, and what you're comfortable with and what that right balance of, of those things are. So the next slide kind of shows you and, and reminds you of, um, the, the goals and priorities that you did establish for, um, this, uh, next fiscal year that starts July 1st. Uh, they're kind of in three kind of bucket areas and, and you can see there's a, a lot of priorities under each of those. And I, I think as we, uh, go throughout the presentation today, you're going to see a lot of these things, uh, um, proposed to be funded. So as you know, I mean, the point of this slide, city at a glance, you know, all in all, we have a lot of, uh, parks. We have a lot of roads. We have a lot of water, uh, sanitary sewer and stormwater sewer infrastructure, uh, to maintain. Uh, and you're going to see a lot of that, uh, today, um, as we, uh, look towards, uh, next year and, and real needs that we have and real investments that we need to make, uh, in our infrastructure, uh, for the future. As we look at our city organization, we also have, you know, operational, uh, aspects that we have to be thinking of. There's a lot of, um, next slide, Jamie, there's a lot of, um, staff, uh, and contracted services that work hard to bring, uh, you know, daily services and, um, and, and take care of, uh, you know, the day to day and, and work on these projects. Obviously we have full, eleven full-time staff, but we also, um, have a lot of seasonal help as well. We have four seasonal DPW, uh, staff, uh, that, that help us. We have up to 25 seasonal beach staff. Uh, and then we contract with, uh, a lot of other services. So we contract for law enforcement services with the Aligan County Sheriff's Department. We contract, uh, for our engineering. Uh, we have a contracted planner and then we also contract for assessing services. So this is kind of one of my favorite educational slides that I think you had all expressed a desire to see more education onto the community. And I, I wish we had more community members here in the, the seats today, but maybe some of them will, will look back at the presentation. But, you know, folks write their, their tax checks to the city of Sagatuck and it's, uh, you know, it's a large amount, right? Uh, and they think, man, I'm, I'm paying so much and, and, you know, so much in taxes to the city. Um, and not, and a lot of those folks just don't necessarily realize that the vast majority of those dollars are simply passing through the city, that those dollars aren't being kept here. We're, we're, you know, the tax collector for a lot of other taxing jurisdictions. So if you look at a principal residence exemption property, uh, we're only keeping 33 cents on the dollar. Uh, and if you have a, a principal, a non-principal residence exemption, we're only keeping, we're actually keeping less than a quarter. We're keeping 23 cents, uh, on the dollar from those properties. So what we're actually keeping here in the city is, uh, an operating, uh, tax. Uh, we have a specific voter, uh, approved, uh, roads millage. Uh, and then there was a voter approved, uh, uh, road debt, um, millage as well that, uh, is actually expiring here, uh, in a few years and will probably be part of the equation as we look towards, uh, future, uh, funding for future infrastructure needs. Uh, otherwise lots of other folks, uh, send taxes to the city and we send those back out where they'd be for schools, libraries, fire departments, uh, it all comes through us. So if we look at our operating millage rate history and what you see actually is that even though our, our property tax revenues actually have, have gone up, uh, over time, our operating millage rate history has, has gone down. And that's, um, because of the Hedley, uh, amendment that requires, um, rollbacks, um, to, to kind of keep, uh, your, your, your millage rates in line with, uh, inflation. And so, um, we, we could have a whole nother presentation on proposal A and its interplay with Hedley and its challenges and, and why it's frustrating to, uh, local governments. And, and perhaps it would be beneficial for us to do that. But essentially, well, what you see here is we're looking at another rollback, uh, going into next fiscal year, um, where we're going to lose nearly 4% of our operating millage rates, uh, uh, because of Hedley, uh, rollbacks. So it continues to kind of trend downward. So unless there's some sort of, uh, voter, uh, approval to, to uncap, uh, Hedley and restore it, uh, to its, initially it was set at 17 and a half in your city charter. I mean, so you can see how far down we've gone. We're, we're maxed out on our operating, so we don't have any room to go up. And so every time Hedley says we have to roll back, it's coming right off, uh, your, your operating millage. Next slide also kind of helps put into perspective where our millage rates are at compared to other area, uh, cities. Um, comparing to townships, there's, there's a lot of, townships necessarily have the same level of services and so their, their tax rates, uh, are different. But, um, if you look at other area cities, I mean, essentially, you know, we're, we're, um, really low rates to our operating millage. And even though we have an extra, you know, voted millage that relates to roads, a lot of these other communities have very, you know, similar items in place where they're, they're collecting dollars, you know, on top of their operating as well. But you can see that, that we're much lower than others. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, uh, City Manager. This is a great presentation. Uh, question I have is regarding the operating millage. So that graph that's on the screen that we were just looking at, so that's just the operating tax rate. So on top of that, for the city of Sagatuck, we would add the roads and the road debt, which would be an effective millage rate of 13.2501. So that just. Roads and the road debt, which would be an effective millage rate of thirteen point two five zero one. So that just. That's how I kind of look at it is, okay, what's the actual total millage that we're charging our our citizens?
Yes, uh, true. Um, but you know, as I indicated, I I think, you know, a lot of these other cities and I I would have to look at each one to know, but. I can guarantee that the vast majority of them also have extra voted millages as well. So.
Yeah, just the point I'm making though is that I look at it collectively as opposed to just the operating, but the operating portion is the most important, of course.
Yep, no, fair enough. Yep, totally understand that. So if you look at the next slide here, we we kind of get into, we have uh fund based accounting here in in local government. And so we have our our general fund, which is our largest fund. Uh, and it's also the most flexible fund. So these are the dollars that are your property tax dollars going into your general fund. And and we have a lot of flexibility in what we can uh choose to do with those dollars. Whether we keep them in the general fund, we have flexibility in what we spend them on. And we also have flexibility if we want to transfer them to. Uh, assist uh projects and and other funds. And you'll see some of that actually uh today. Uh, we then have our 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 local streets and major street funds, which are restricted funds where we. The dollars that go into them is essentially have to be used for a specific purpose. So in this case, uh, we'll talk about uh this today. They have to be used on either local or major streets. And there's some distinctions uh through Act fifty one that. Um, kind of helps identify, um, you know, whether it's a local street project or a major street project. We have a whole mapped out system that kind of shows us which roads are which and. But those dollars have to be used uh for local or major street uh related projects or um non-motorized infrastructure or stormwater improvements and those types of things. Uh, we have a debt service fund, which is uh on that 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 previous debt. That was issued by the city and that was voter approved. So we have a fund that specifically collects those dollars and maintains those dollars that and that we can only use those dollars that to pay down uh the debt. We have a right now a combined water and sewer fund, and you're going to see that we're we're proposing that we kind of split the existing fund into separate um water and sewer capital improvement funds. Uh, so that those dollars are also uh only being used for their specific purpose uh going forward. And they're also more appropriate, going to be classified as kind of capital improvement funds versus something that's maybe more operational, which is not how we're set up, uh, given that we have uh the water sewer authority. Uh, and then we have a motor pool fund, which is an internal service fund that essentially is kind of runs like its own little business fund, uh, which is where we uh buy and purchase uh and repair our motor vehicles. Uh, and then we uh actually charge our other funds for the use of those vehicles um as well. So as you look at this kind of overall, if we were to look at like it, like which funds bring in the most revenue and and, you know, the next slide shows you that. Um, you know, no surprise, it's your general fund, right? That's where the vast majority of your revenues uh are coming in. Your second highest is is your local streets fund. Uh, and then from there, the pie kind of uh gets a lot smaller. So you can see our general fund uh is where we're bringing in the most dollars. But the good thing is that's where we also have the the most flexibility. Uh, although in every one of these funds, um, except maybe debt service, I I could say we could certainly use more, given the the nature of uh how many projects we uh have on our capital improvement plan. If you look at the next slide, we then start talking about um our general fund and kind of how it's structured. And essentially, we have kind of, you know, sixteen different departments where. Uh, we kind of, you know, separate out that general fund and and take a look at, well, okay, how do we want to allocate um those most more flexible dollars? Where do we intend to um spend them? Uh, but again, throughout the year, we have flexibility. If we're we're seeing that a certain budget is is coming in below budget and we we have needs in another one, then that's where we ask you uh and talk with you about budget amendments and moving some things around. Um, but essentially, this kind of helps us keep track of like what the actual costs are in in particular areas. So my next slide kind of kicks off, you know. The meat of this this presentation and really the main budget message this year is is that, you know, you're looking to maintain, repair and replace what you have, which lines up exactly with what your community survey said, right? Your 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 biggest. Uh, area that the community wants you to wanted you to to focus on was infrastructure. That was the top priority. And so with that, your priority list has projects, 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 and I could probably add sixteen more projects. Uh, you know, as I'm I'm stating this, uh, because this this budget's pretty project heavy, um, but you can see there's some some dollars here that 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 are going to be needed to do it. So. So then we get into our 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 general fund balance. And what is that? That's essentially your the city's savings account, general fund savings account, right? And over time. Uh, the the city and the council is is really kind of built that up. And the next slide here in a second is not ready yet, but going to show you kind of what that looks like over time. But. Uh, as of your audits, uh, at the end of last fiscal year, you were a little over six point two million dollars in savings that you have ready to deploy and actually put to work. Now, some of that is actually committed already for certain purposes, right? You've you've committed a million dollars of that to parks, which if we go through with this mountain bald head, you know, bathroom, that's something that you could choose to take from that, um, you know, committed. Fund balance and and reduce that that commitment. Uh, and then we have some smaller amounts that are committed for from past donations and and grants related to to the Rose Garden and and Spear Street. Um, but unassigned, you have over five million dollars that you have flexibility on. But really, your committed dollars even for parks is something that you you have some flexibility on. You could choose to change that commitment. You don't have to stick with that that commitment essentially long term.
Yeah, the spear street commitment. What could could you remind me what that is? Is that the boat launch?
That's the boat's on boat launch. Yep, I'm sorry. I could have probably put a an extra word there to help out. Yep.
Were you thinking it might be the block party?
I was thinking in front of my house.
Yeah, yeah, right. Some improvements. Yeah, good point. So.
Appreciate it.
And overall, your your savings in the city are are very healthy, especially as it it looks, you look to your policy, right? Your policy is to keep at least a million dollars total in in reserves. Uh, well, you're well, well above that. Um, and 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 now we really start to get into some of these discussions about what's that right balance between what do we need to save for a rainy day and and, you know, things that might happen? Um, and things that aren't expected. And when do we start to say, hey, we need to start deploying some of this capital and investing in 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 necessary items? So as we look at the the next slide, this kind of will show you really your general fund balance uh over time. So as we look back to, you know, ten years, your general fund balance was actually a little under two million dollars. So in a period of. Ten years, I mean, you've brought it up to over six million dollars. So it's gone up dramatically, uh, especially since, you know, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Your budget that you've approved for this current fiscal year actually indicated that we'd use about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars of your fund balance. The current projections, again, things could happen. Um, we'll see how the year shapes up, but we're not looking like we're probably going to need to use fund balance this year. We're we're probably going to uh, you know, at least hopefully come in flat. Maybe we'll add. Um, but right now, the projection is that we'll we'll probably, you know, maintain your fund balance. And then. I'm kind of shooting you to the end maybe of 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 the presentation here, but at least it relates to the general fund. If if we if you were to approve the budget, that's that's before you today. Essentially, we'd be bringing the uh the fund balance down to a little under five. Uh, million dollars, which is still well above your one million dollar policy goal. And I think when you see the list of projects that that you wanted to to fund, um, I think you'll see that your, you know. Investment in capital projects is, you know, is is really putting that money to work. We're not looking to use fund balance essentially to fund operations. We're really uh pouring it into um projects. So one of the one side of the equation on all of this is also, you know, our our revenue side and 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 part of that is also looking at uh not just taxes. Uh, next slide, Jamie. Is it's it's fees, right? And um, so there's a few fee uh uh recommendations that are probably becoming your way this year. One is related to short term rentals. The fire department actually just this week notified us that uh they're going to be increasing the cost of the short term rental um inspections. So uh, given their their cost increase and and evaluating, um, you know, current uh costs and Granicus going up a little bit, some of our legal fees and and recovering some of that over several years related to our updates to our ordinances. I plan on bringing forth a recommendation to to change your short term rental fee from from licensing fee from five twenty five to five forty. Uh, and then your reinspection fee from one fifty to one uh seventy five. Um, the water infrastructure front, as as you know, we have a lot of water infrastructure needs. Obviously, we 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 know Maple Street and that project is moving forth. Uh, you may recall that when you did your asset management plan, that, you know, the consultant recommended that you implement a twenty dollar per meter equivalent water infrastructure fee on bills. And you you made that really difficult decision last year and did that and implemented that. And that's frankly. Kind of helped fund a good chunk of the Maple Street project. But that plan also recommended that you increase that fee by three dollars per MEU for the next several years. Um, so we 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 plan on bringing forth that that request to you to to make a decision on that. Uh, on the sewer side of things, we don't have a specific infrastructure fee. Um, and you've actually already approved. Uh, Andy Campbell is a a rate consultant to assist us. Once we get this water sewer agreement uh uh update across the finish line. Uh, he's already ready to go to uh help take a look at the uh asset needs on the the sewer side long term and what we should start putting away for that. Uh, and then your water sewer connection and tat fees. That's essentially when you have somebody uh new property or uh that's connecting into or is upgrading their waters or sewer lines to to be larger. Uh, those fees haven't been updated since nineteen ninety six. Um, and so that's also something that the rate consultant is going to help uh us um determine what's the the new appropriate rates. So beyond just looking at fees, this is kind of an overall highlight of your your general fund uh uh revenues as we talked about. We're looking at a a roll rollback of your operating millage rate due to Hedley of a little under four percent. So I'd bring it down to uh ten point one seven six one. Uh, but despite the operating millage uh rate reduction, you're we're still looking at an increase in overall property tax um revenues, right? We had a CPI increase and then we had some new construction that came on. Um, so that's actually increasing our property tax revenue collections. Uh, we're budgeting and anticipating it being over a hundred fifty eight thousand dollars. Uh, permit revenue continues to be up. Uh, we've seen this steadily go up. Largely due to some zoning historic district fee increases back in twenty twenty three um that were that were, you know, well overdue. Uh, we have some street dining fees that we're collecting. And then. Uh, as you know, we're working to um, you know, make sure that that fees for short term rentals are capturing our actual costs. And so because more and more of those are coming on to an annual um renewal. Um, you're going to see more and more uh permit fees there that are there to then offset the the corresponding costs that you'll see in kind of the planning and zoning department.
Yeah, question on the operating millage reduction due to the heavily amendment. Um, is there a way to equate that or to convert that to a dollar figure? What in terms of reduction in property taxes? I know there's going to be an increase due to the CPI increase, but when we go from a operating millage of ten point uh. Ten point five, ten point five eight eight down to ten point one seven six one, that's going to be a reduction in. Dollars, correct?
It's not a, yeah, so it's not a reduction in your overall property tax collections because, yeah, we had the CPI increase, but then we had new construction value that came on that's. Taken out of the rollback formula for Hedley. So essentially, the Hedley formula takes a look at last year's values uh minus um losses, which would be like, you know, if you had, you know, a property that was gutted and and torn down. Uh, times the the um inflationary rate and divides it by your new taxable value uh that they that the assessors come up with, and which a lot of that's, you know, your 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 three percent increase. And then. Uh, you have also uncapping. Uh, but then you take out the uh additions, the new construction uh out of that, uh, which helps determine how much it has to be rolled back. But because of that. That CPI increase and that new construction, you're actually, you know, your net result, even though you have a reduction in the millage rate is actually more in tax revenue.
So thank you for the explanation. So that doesn't necessarily mean that, I mean, some people could see a reduction in their property tax bill. As a result of this and others are because they're new or whatever is are going to see comparable or not comparable, are going to see increases.
Yeah, as it relates to ours, it is kind of interesting that we're essentially, the CPI is up three point one percent on taxable value, but then the heavily rollback is going to push. Our operating millage rate below that inflationary increase. Um, you're actually seeing the same with the um. Um, the local streets millage, the um, the debt millage rate we're we're planning to keep the same because we're actually a little underfunded in that and need to in the next four years make up for it. Um, before it's paid off. Um, so on our 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 rates, yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm I'm gonna have further comment about this at at the end of the presentation. This is good. Thank you.
Interesting.
Can I, can I? So one thing I was just focusing on while we're kind of talking about revenue. So if we, you know, by capping short term rentals on the hill as we. Potentially, I would think logically would have more principal residence um properties. We will get more of their tax dollars than the non-PREs, right? Because we get thirty three percent of a dollar versus twenty three percent? No.
No, the only reason why it's it's less for um. The non-PREs is because they're then paying eighteen, actually eighteen mills in the school operating.
Okay.
So just.
So we don't.
To lose the formula, ours is the same regardless of whether you're P R or you're non-P R.
Darn.
Now, the, you know, you get into other discussions related to whether the short term rental is, you know, the value of it's worth more and how much the city brings in it relates to the taxes on that. I mean, that that. You know, can be an interesting discussion, but. So on the interest income front, uh, you know, we've done really well. And we talked about that actually at your last workshop that we've done well with interest income. Obviously, interest rates continue to be a and and, you know, it'd be interesting to see what happens. Um, obviously, some of that discussion is playing out right now. Should they be decreased or should they remain where they're at? Uh, you know. Market's kind of pricing in, you know, some decreases. Obviously, we're going to use, we're anticipating using some fund balance. So we're being, you know. More more conservative and and estimating that we'll have some interest income, uh, maybe not as much as we ended up with this past couple of fiscal years, but we anticipate some. Uh, Oval Beach, last year, you uh made a decision to increase the uh daily and seasonal passes out there, which has continued to increase uh the revenues. Um, so. Um, we've included some additional revenue here in the budget uh to account for that. Um. Still hope to see, well, we may see more than I guess we have budgeted here. But again, we're being conservative. A lot of other factors could go into that. Um. Uh, federal and other grants. So you remember recall last year, you you budgeted for Blue Star Trail construction to begin around this time. And unfortunately, it just, you know, we're not kicking off construction. So we amended your budget for 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 this current fiscal year and and took that out. Uh, but now going into next fiscal year, we have to plan again as if the the construction were going to occur. And uh, we have one point six million dollars uh in grants secured for that project. And, you know, if you kind of put it into perspective and look at, okay, if you have one point six million dollars in grants, that's coming back to the community. Well, that's twenty five percent of your. General fund savings and balance, right? I mean, so that's a pretty significant amount of money as if you were to relate it to your 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 overall fund balance that that you're really. Um, you know, bringing back and not needing to uh to tap into if you were to be doing this project, uh, we were to be doing this project uh ourselves. Uh, miscellaneous donations and income. Uh, as we know, there's a donor who's indicated that they're willing to support the the uh some improvements at Village Square Courts. Um. Uh, Blue Star Trail, uh, we're anticipating, you know, uh, obviously, we have some additional engineering and assessments from the tribes to do. We're anticipating that not all of that cost is going to be on us, that we'll have the friends of the Blue Star Trail and township participating. And so we anticipate that revenue coming in. Uh, and then um, we're hopeful that the C V B will continue to help support uh the holiday lighting. Uh, and then. Again, the net result here essentially, as we go through the next several slides and look at the projects that we're looking to to do this year is that we'd be looking at um. Using a little over one, well, nearly one point three million dollars of our of our our savings, our city savings, which is about twenty percent of it to fund capital improvement projects. And that's where your discussion really kicks in. Do we want to do all these projects? Do we want to do more? Do we want to do less? I mean, those are all decisions that that we seek your your feedback on. But that's right now as as proposed with the budgets. What the result would be. So we look at general fund appropriation highlights. Uh, we look at first, you know. Uh, I think you have all indicated a willingness to invest in staff, which I appreciate and and helps me as a manager, as we're working uh day to day with. With folks who have a lot on their plates and and are doing a lot of great things. And so this budget really includes um. How both uh dollars for both inflationary adjustments and merit increases. So we look at merit increases and, you know, as of July first to take a look if you're meeting your. Um, uh, expectations. We look at giving you a step increase as long as you're not maxed out on your scale. And then. Uh, at the end of the year, we want to adjust those scales uh by inflation. So they're keeping up and staying competitive. And so this budget, um, you know, includes those dollars uh to do that next year. Um, this budget includes kind of some extra consulting and contractual um support for some of the the priorities that that you've established. So um, I kind of combined them all in the one amount here. You can kind of see. Them a little more itemized in the 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 line by line data. But essentially, we've we've talked about, you know, wayfinding signage and and park designs. Well, that kind of starts as well as a new website, right? Well, that really kind of starts with, should we be, you know, redesigning our logo and our branding? Because all of that, then it would have to be incorporated into a new website and new signage. And, you know, so. Um, so it's kind of a a a process that involves a lot there. And so um, but we we need some folks that that specialize in that work to it to assist with that. Um, your management was something that was discussed as part of your recent track community wildlife committee recommendations. So there's some dollars included the. Uh, for some some calling, if that's the direction that you want to go. Um, you've expressed a desire to kind of tackle uh looking at some parking options. So and and I anticipate we're going to need some some consulting support for that. Um, telecommunications has been a a discussion that you've had a number of times and wanting to to dive deeper into that and looking at maybe a some sort of more formal plan or at least. Uh, you know, providing staff with some some um uh assistance with that. So that's included and then a a website uh redesign is included as well. Next item is really further staffing support for the Department of Public Works. Um, and this kind of relates to, um, you know, we for the last two years have had a uh position budgeted. In the last two budgets that we we simply haven't filled. Um, that's there's a variety of reasons behind that. Obviously, we had uh a previous city manager and then I came in, then we had some staffing changes and we wanted to evaluate our staff and strengths and and needs. Um, and as we've, you know, as I've taken a look at, you know, and talked with our staff about, you know, what's on their plates and frankly, they're maxed and they feel like they need some help. And support. And we've taken a look at our kind of existing operations and staffing and 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 what's. And support and we've taken a look at our kind of existing operations and staffing and, and, and what's going well and what maybe we need to make some changes on. We'll be looking at some changes here at, at, at City Hall that will likely involve our current deputy clerk and administrative assistant who is supporting D P W. A couple of days a week now, coming fully into, to City Hall and kind of being. Your new first touch point at City Hall with, with phones and customers to kind of help support the treasurer, planning and zoning and, and the city clerk. But then. Taking out that D P W administrative assistants, well, that's two days a week. There's a need really to, for, for D P W to have that sort of administrative support. And then. Hoping to, if we can thread the needle, that we might be able to find somebody that also is, is, you know, the skills also help with some project coordination and. And. So more to come on that. In fact, next month I plan on bringing forth a more comprehensive plan on that and details of what that position would look like. But obviously we're preparing a budget so that, that those details are in here for now, but. File scanning. Unfortunately, we didn't get this project done this year. The, the, you know, the calendars just didn't work out with the, the contractor that we had really good price from. And so we can get on the calendar before the end of this calendar year. But unfortunately, this is a project that I think we're, we're carrying over into next fiscal year. Next slide is, is legal fees. I, I know you brought it up. I know your constituents have brought it up and, you know. Fortunately, the city remains in, in litigation with Dune Ridge. We're still waiting to hear back from the Court of Appeals. And we still have to plan on, on your direction of continuing to pursue our, our case in the courts. And if, if that were to involve the Court of Appeals ruling against us and, and potentially having a trial, we need to make sure that we have dollars budgeted for that purpose. So that this budget, you know, concludes a lot of fees for continued litigation with Dune Ridge if need be. You know, I did want to note that, you know, we've, we've continued to see, I think, a trend line where legal fees continuing, have continued to decrease. Some of that's because we've shifted legal to Zoom instead of in-person attendance at meetings, which has helped reduce, you know, drive time costs and, and really cut a pretty good chunk out. We would have been trending even better. I anticipate before, before the end of this fiscal year, we're going to be well, you know, well under our legal expenses budget overall. Had we not had the playground lawsuit, we'd be, you know, even better shape, but unfortunately, that's one of those unforeseen pieces that, that did arise. So as it relates to use of legal fees, you know, we use legal for reviewing our contracts and agreements and drafting ordinances. Obviously, we have legal research on various matters that, that come up, that staff have questions on or that you have questions on, or projects that you want to work on. Our water sewer agreements, they've been heavily involved with, with that process and that's likely to carry over into next fiscal year and we have to plan on that. They also support our, our enforcement efforts related to planning and zoning and we've had a, a number of recent kind of enforcement cases that they've been assisting on. And then per your direction, they continue to attend meetings, but now via Zoom. So I'm recommending at this point that we kind of leave our, our legal funding levels at the same as last fiscal year. And noting as well, though, that some of the planning and zoning legal fees are recovered, whether it be through escrows or permit fees that we bring in. So some of those costs are offset. On the planning and zoning front, we're proposing that we continue to really fund a robust planning and zoning department. Next slide, Jamie. Yeah, planning and zoning department. So short term rental enforcement inspections, you know, continues to be, you know, one of the large cost drivers now. Continuing to use Granicus, the one eight hundred hotline and address ID. We are continuing to contract for some part-time code enforcement through our, our, our planning firm. And then the fire department is going to have additional inspections this next year because more people are now coming on the one-year renewal timeline is, and then their costs are increasing. But again, we have offsetting revenue. So we got to account for the revenue and then we got to account for the expenses separately. So. Master plan update is something that you prioritize and the planning commission has been discussing. So this budget includes dollars to support that process. And then we continue to include dollars for a contractual planner and contractual engineer to, to support reviews of more, you know, complicated plans. And, and stormwater issues and streets related issues and things like that. So then we get into the project side of things. And so this is where kind of. Rubber, you know, kind of meets the road as far as, you know, what do you, what do you want to use? Maybe some, some fun balance on with maybe some exceptions. Because some of them do have offsetting revenue. So Blue Star Trail, again, we talked about that being back in the budget. Hoping to have construction done this next, next fiscal year. We're going to continue to try to pursue that. And again, we're expecting some additional engineering and assessments as we work through the, the process with historic, historic reviews and, and the tribes. But we anticipate, again, we're going to have some, some revenue offset here. You know, the Friends of the Blue Star Trail are still engaged, the Township's still engaged. You know, that, that, those dollars aren't entirely going to be ours. The dollars that really are. Ours is, is a traffic signal at Lake and Blue Star that, you know, last year you, you included it in the budget, wanted to pursue it. We did pursue some grant dollars and haven't had success with that. That's something that you're still interested in, in funding and having as part of the larger Blue Star Trail project. The traffic signal dollars are, are included and at least in here to be, you know, to plan for if we're not able to obtain grants. Baldhead Park improvements. Kind of a combination here, you know, if we get construction started this year, we're likely to have some construction or end of construction, you know, go in the next fiscal year. So we got to kind of pay some of those dollars in the next fiscal year. We're continuing with design engineering for the upper platform and then that vegetation restoration, north of the steps has been a desire of yours as well. And so we have some dollars included for that. Invasive species, this line item essentially was already in your, your budget for this year and carries over. A large amount of the one hundred thousand dollars is used to treat mill foil. We can use some additional dollars to treat out at Sagatuck Harbor Natural Area if you want, and then we could have some offsetting revenue if, if you want to, to pursue that. Now that we've kind of opened up those funds again at the community foundation. City Hall. We had this actually in last year's budget as well. We got some more refined numbers to, to kind of take a look at. You know, design options for this space and which may involve, you know. You know, some structural pieces and what we can actually do and not do, and it might involve some more complicated engineering. And so. The Fleeces and Vanad Brink has given us an estimate that, you know, we could expect up to thirty thousand dollars for that, that process. And then kind of figure out what the cost would be and have some, some deeper discussions about whether or not we'd want to move forward with an interior remodel or for some, should be something that's, that's more scaled back. And then the Village Square Courts, right? We're including dollars here. These is donor funded. We applied for a grant for more comprehensive work. If we get more comprehensive. We get more grant dollars, we can, you know, amend the budget and include greater expenses with the offsetting revenue. But for now, we, we at least know we have a hundred thousand dollars from a donor, or at least a commitment from a donor to, to fund a project. Next slide is, is kind of holiday lighting. So this is, this one's been kind of interesting. So we got quotes to continue the existing holiday lighting for the next few years and that, that, that dollar amount's twenty six thousand three hundred fifty dollars. But as you saw this year, we, we then ended up with, you know, some outages at certain times and, and issues with certain electrical outlets. And so. You know, Scott had some initial conversations with, with our engineers to say, hey, if we need to upgrade even just our existing poles and what's, you know, the engineering costs on that, what would that likely be, likely to be to just, you know, do what we currently do? And, you know, estimate is around seventy five thousand dollars. But Scott's in some conversations with consumers to see if some, they might take on some of those poles. And can maybe spread that cost out over time and, and handle it upfront with some of their project folks. So more to come on this. This may be something that's a fluctuating number that we updated in the future budget draft for you. And essentially, there's some additional dollars that, that Scott kind of, you know, got together to look at, okay, well, if we're going to expand this, you know, what are the costs going to be? And, and if you have questions, we can let him speak to it. But essentially, you know, we didn't, I didn't include dollars to expand the, the lighting, given how much this is going to cost us to maintain what we have. But if it's something that you want to pursue, we can certainly look at, you know, pursuing it or including it in the budget if it's something that you have a desire to do. As part of that Maple Street project, we're looking to resurface the public works lot. You're like, well, why is it eighty five thousand? I thought it was more than that. Well, it is. But the Maple Street project's going to happen over two fiscal years. It's kind of begin, end of this next fiscal year and then the beginning of the following. So a lot of the costs here, you'll see are anywhere from fifty to sixty percent of the overall project costs because it's going to fall in under two years. Wayfinding a new park signage. So, you know, we talked about the, the contractual services to help with, you know, new logos and branding and, and kind of coming up with those signs. But we need actual dollars to, you know, either get new signs or replace existing park signage. If that's the direction you want to go. So Scott did some checking on some, some numbers. I actually had talked with Douglas to see how much they paid and if right now we're, you know, right around a hundred thousand dollars. Maybe light, may not get it all done, but we got to plan for something. Scott's identified in his team, you know, at the Culver Street lot, the retaining wall along Mason is in, in, in rough shape and needs some, some work. He's got an estimate on that to replace that for twenty thousand dollars. And then the chain ferry landing in Arbers. So Scott, actually, at your, your next workshop, I'm going to be gone, but he's going to cover kind of replacing the existing chain ferry arbors and replicating them as is. And then you can also kind of touch on maybe during that meeting, some of the, the landing needs and issues that they've kind of identified. That they're able to put a kind of a Band-Aid on for now to get us through the season, but there's some greater needs that the landings need. That are going to be about a hundred thousand dollars with including engineering to get done. And then. We talked about the, the Maple Street sidewalk as part of approving that project and that about seventy percent of that cost would come from the general fund. Well, we got to show a transfer in your general fund to reimburse local streets for that, a portion of that, that sidewalk cost that's expected to occur in the fiscal year. All right. So that's the general fund. So we're getting close. All right. I'll have a few more slides. I know that you guys will be very patient and listening to me. So. So then we go on to major and local streets and we look at what are our regular funding sources here? We have act fifty one dollars, which are state gas tax and registration. So anywhere from a hundred ninety, you know, about a hundred ninety thousand dollars that, that we're bringing in from that. As, you know, we heard from, you know, Representative Anders recently and, and some talk in the state legislature, we might see an increase in this. Or we're going to cross our fingers and cross everything else and hope that we see some significant funding increases. But for now, we can only plan on what, what, what they normally give us. We get county road millage dollars. So you're paying into a county road millage. Then they send dollars back to the community. We can expect a hundred ninety to two hundred thousand dollars or so for that. And then we have that local road village that, that you all voted to collect, well, your constituents voted to collect. That we then can deploy for, for local road projects and similar thing here, right? Due to heavily, we're reducing that, we'll have to reduce that mileage. Estimate that it'll go back from one point seven four one to one point six seven four. So some additional revenue that we are expecting for this fiscal year, we just signed that, that cost share agreement with Sagatuck Township. So their portion of that West Lane of Road that's likely to, the, the work that's going to occur in this next fiscal year, their reimbursement would be about two hundred forty three thousand dollars. We would expect half of the category B grant from the state for the Maple Street project to come in this next fiscal year. And then the, the local streets fund will also receive a general fund transfer for the sidewalk that we discussed. And then the major streets would see a, a transfer of seventy thousand dollars from the general fund to help fund Elizabeth Street Design Engineering. So as we, you know, we're working on Maple Street design right now. We want to get that project going next year. Well, then we got to tee up. And Elizabeth Street after that, put your capital improvement plan. Well, that means we have to ask some dollars to start the engineering work on that. Right now, your water sewer fund, you know, is really going to be pretty taxed with this helping with the Maple Street project. And so I'm recommending that you, you transfer dollars from your general fund to help reimburse the major streets fund for the water and sewer portion of that design. On the major street side of thing, we, we may need to use a little bit of fun balance to get that Elizabeth Street Design Engineering across the finish line. So we'll see how the revenues progress throughout the year. But on the local streets fund, this is where you're going to be using some fun balance for the Maple Street project. As, as we've kind of discussed in that previous funding plan. So the next slide kind of shows you, similar to the general fund, you know, your trend lines as far as your major and local street fund balances, your savings in those particular funds. Right now, we project that, you know, your local streets fund will be right around two and a quarter million dollars at the end of the year. And then, you know, about three quarters of a million dollars in major streets. At the end of next fiscal year, if you were to approve the budget, we'd be bringing those down a bit, but still have dollars to, to continue on to some future road projects. The other piece that we're also planning on, on Maple, I'm sorry, the major and local streets project, which is the next slide. I was talking about Maple Street, we're counting for sixty percent of the project this next fiscal year because that's what. Our engineers anticipated would be complete before the end of the fiscal year. Could be more than that, could be less than that, but that's, that's what we know at this point. If it's more than that, we'll have to do some budget adjustments, but at least it's a project that you know and you approve and, and you're expecting. Again, that Elizabeth Street overall design cost is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that's designed for the road, water main replacement and sanitary sewer repairs. Scott and John have asked for some, some resurfacing dollars on other streets. There's a lot of other streets that, you know, maybe don't need the, the water main or sewer work, but. Need some road resurfacing. But the caveat to that is that some of them also have some lead service lines that need to be replaced. So you're going to see some dollars here in a moment for that. But they asked for two hundred thousand dollars to be in the budget for road resurfacing, which is in line with what we've done the last couple of years to give you an idea of how much work we've gotten done. It's actually a little bit more than that. I think we've actually had a little less work than that last year. And then Park Street planning kind of carries over into next year's budget. We've applied for a grant to pay for half of this cost. We're just still waiting to hear on the grant. Hope to hear before the end of the year and then we can move some of that conceptual planning and options moving forward as well. So then we get into the Water Capital Improvement Fund. Again, this is where we're going to propose splitting our existing combined water sewer fund into two separate capital improvement funds. We've, Nikki and I talked with, met with our auditors and, and discussed what the best approach for this would be now that we have a separate water infrastructure fee coming in. And we need to make sure that we're only using those dollars for that purpose, right? It's very important. And, and the auditors concurred and, and agreed with that, that we should split them and that this is the, the way we should go. So revenue that we can expect, we can expect to continue to collect the water infrastructure fee. Right now, we're budgeting two hundred seventy five thousand, but, you know, if you increase the fee, we'll, we'll see a little bit more. We expect some in tap fees and interest. And then really the other big piece that's coming into the fund would be the Township's cost share for the water main replacement for the Maple Street project. Even with all that, we're still going to need to use some fund balance from the, the water fund, which is kind of what we had planned on. We put the, together the, the funding proposal for Maple Street. So to get that water main replaced, we're looking at using about three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars of the Water Capital Improvement Fund savings. And then in addition to Maple Street and that, that, that project cost, we're looking at some, you know, additional lead service line replacements, especially if we were going to repave a road. We'd probably rather get the lead service line replaced if we can. And so start chipping away at, at more of those. We're also going to be doing a lot of lead service line replacements as part of Maple Street. So you're going to, you know, get a good, good chunk there from those two. The Water Street gate valve kind of relates to. Not having good ways to shut off water service to downtown. You may remember a couple of years ago, there was a, an issue out here that led to a kind of a water shut off of a, of a greater area. Engineers have recommended kind of adding in a, a valve to essentially help isolate those areas a little bit better. So not everybody's impacted. Estimated cost of that is fifty thousand dollars and that was on that capital improvement plan. And then, once we get that water, well, we have some consulting support for additional, this water sewer agreement. And then they're ready to, to do some further rate study after we get done. To make sure that we're still on the right track there. Then in the Sewer Capital Improvement Fund. And we're looking at tap fees and interest, a portion of the Township's cost of the repairs of the sewer. Main, using some fund balance to help fund that piece of the Maple Street project. And then again, getting that sewer agreement across the finish line and then doing some rate study on, should we have a capital improvement fee as it relates to sewer? Motor pool, Scott, I think very soon is going to be bringing forth some, some, some bigger purchases that are budgeted for this fiscal year. But for next fiscal year, we, we're looking to, to budget for a new pickup truck to replace an existing and then make a plow to go on that truck. So even with what we're anticipating spending this year as well as, you know, that new equipment, we, we do have sufficient dollars in the motor pool. Although it's, you know, a good chunk of that will be taken with this front end loader that, that he wants to purchase. So. But it's due. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with him. So in summary. I think you've seen that you, you've built up healthy savings in your various funds and, and now it's kind of that, that time, if you, if you're ready to, to invest in, in infrastructure needs. It's not going to get cheaper as you go along. You can see the costs have gone up even dramatically the last five years, right? So this proposed budget, I think, funds nearly all of your, your priorities that, that you established. It adequately funds city services and operations. It invests significantly in existing and new infrastructure. It's, it doesn't require any debt service to complete the projects. And from my perspective, you, you still would maintain healthy reserves in your general fund that are far, and it would be far above your, your policy requirement. But at the end of the day. You're our policymakers. You get to decide what, what projects move forward and which ones don't. And if you take something off the list, we, we will understand. But I, I do think everything you identified, you know, there's, there's very good reasons for them and, and they're not going to be cheaper in the long run. But so that's my presentation I have. I'm happy to answer questions that you have today. Again, we'll, we'll post this on the website. We'll get you a copy of it. If you want to set up individual meetings, we're happy to do that. We can do more workshops if you want to, but I'm happy to answer any questions today, Mayor.
Joe, I want to start with you again, just making sure we get to you.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Ryan, thank you for that presentation. It was incredibly helpful. I know a lot of work went into not only that presentation, but the draft budget that you presented, a lot of numbers there, a lot to go through. But I do appreciate all the hard work and and the way you consolidated all this information. So I just have a couple of questions, maybe some observations. So you mentioned earlier in the presentation, and I apologize because I wasn't doing the math as we went through it, but you said an overall, an overall fund reduction of approximately 20% across the board if we were to execute this budget according to plan. Is that is that a fair?
It would be about a 20% reduction in your in your general fund savings.
Oh, I thought that was a consolidated fund reduction. But that's just just the general is 20% down. And then the other funds are other percentages based on those numbers you put up, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And 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 then we have a, in terms of the the motor pool fund, obviously, there's going to be a potential big hit coming from the new end loader, correct? That'll drag that fund balance down significantly before the end of this fiscal year? That's a possibility?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Okay. So, you know, obvious, you know, with at the risk of stating the obvious, you know, I know it's hard to get there and maybe some one-on-one meetings are going to help me. But of the capital projects we're taking on, you know, my head and I and thank you for covering because my head went right there, right? We're not, we're not accruing the full cost in this budget. We're only anticipating or appropriating in the budget, the fiscal year cost. And several of these larger programs are multi-year. I think you said approximately 60% of the costs are hitting us, right?
As it relates to the Maple Street project, yes.
Maple Street's 60%, yeah. Got it. So it it's, there's probably no easy way to have a kind of a a view into next fiscal year and what projects are going to, you know, carry over, especially since, and I'm not sure that that'd be helpful, but that's one of the things that's going through my mind right now. I mean, until we have a budget for obviously for next fiscal year, not knowing what's carrying over isn't going to really help us too much. But, you know, as a general observation, while our general fund balance, and I really appreciate that graph, has gone up. If I do an inflation adjustment on those numbers, we're probably not that far off from where we started 10 years ago. Could be wrong, but if we included all the, you know, the current inflation data. So it's just kind of a cautionary tale here that, and by the way, I I'm not, I'm not second guessing this budget. This these are, this is really good information, but it's just kind of a cautionary thing out there as we kind of look into the wealth of projects that we have out there. That 20% drawdown of the general fund, I think, turns into, could potentially turn into a bigger number as we, you know, try and conclude the projects next year. And we have other capital projects that we know are going to, or capital improvement programs that we know are going to come at us, especially as we look at some of the infrastructure that's, you know, eroding underneath us. So that's just my observation. I had some one-off questions on specific, you know, expense provisions. We don't need to get into that now. And and I also want to throw out there, I appreciate you've been conservative on some of the numbers, like the, you know, the estimate for the interest income and what have you. I think maybe a little bit overly conservative, but it helps me feel a little bit more comfortable knowing that there might be just a little bit of cushion here and there, you know, throughout this program. So thank you for that. Anyway, I know that was long-winded, but also a lot of information to kind of digest.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Again, excellent presentation, Ryan and team, very good. You know, I I think this is excellent. I'm hopeful we could do it. If I was going to give any guidance on priorities, it would 100% be around water sewer streets, water sewer streets. And I could I could say that all day. You know, I think we've seen warning signs, Ferry Street, the incident that occurred on Butler Street at the intersection here with the with the with the valve. You know, we are really kind of, I think, built on a very old, you know, foundation of infrastructure. And although the gas leak of the previous week was nothing to do with us and, you know, well beyond our control, it was an accident. The lack of modern infrastructure, the lack of redundancy concerns me. And I think we've seen how painful any type of infrastructure failure could be in this community, particularly if it hits, you know, during our prime tourist season. So I think investing in infrastructure, as was clearly identified, once again, you know, you know, by the taxpayers whose money we were charged with spending to, once again, they've told us loud and clear to maintain, repair and replace what we have. And, you know, I I think we should move forward with this. I think it's an excellent budget. If if there is some tweaking around the edges, I would tweak around things other than than roads, water and sewer. I think those are absolutely critical, like a gas line. I know they're not seen until they until they fail, but we know what happens when they surprise us and they fail. So I would I would urge us to move forward in approving this budget. There are minor things that I'm I'm open to discuss further. The first one that comes to mind is the streetlight project. You know, is there utility, given the delay in the Blue Star Trail project, to, once again, go after a grant opportunity for the traffic light so that those those dollars might be able to be synced up if we are, if we are fortunate enough to get a grant, that we can sync them up with construction period during the Blue Star Trail? These are minor things. Once again, though, I think this is an excellent, excellent budget and I'm very comfortable with. And I think we have, it's incumbent upon us to to, you know, start to put the taxpayers' dollars to work on things that they all can benefit from and also benefit our business community and our tourism economy because, you know, we are guarding against, you know, failure of some critical infrastructure that could be devastating to this community during the summer.
Yeah, thank you. Excellent presentation, Ryan. Appreciate the city staff and all the time and effort that's gone into developing this for us. A lot to consider here. In terms of the process, I think it would be important, a couple of things. One is that it's always difficult to get the community to engage on this, right? I mean, I think we mentioned at the start, I wish there were more people here to hear it. I would like to see us schedule a special presentation of this budget at like 7:00 PM on a Wednesday or something, when more people could attend and actually see this because this is important. And I'd love to get some feedback. And I mean, I mean, I can show this individually with people, but I'd really love to see in a room, you know, maybe we offer some food and refreshments or something, get people to come out and talk to us. At four o'clock Wednesday meeting, which I make a commitment to as an elected official, is not necessarily something that everybody can do. So I like to see us make an effort. And whether there's two people there or 50 people there, the fact that the council made an effort to meet people where they are, maybe up at the school or something, to encourage people to come and see this, I think would be an incredible investment of our time and I think a good move for us to make. So I'd like to see some maybe thoughts on that. Number two is property taxes. If there's one thing I think I've heard recently that I never really have heard from people is, my God, my taxes are high. And that's probably being said in other communities, too. We're blessed here to have a very robust general fund balance. That's through some of the conservative management of our funds from past councils and past city managers. So we're blessed to be able to have that to work with as a basis for changes. But I think it's something we have to talk about in terms of how can we maybe relieve some of the tax burden that I'm hearing from. I've heard this from several people, one one family that just moved here from Chicago, they were shocked. And that had always been my basis for comparison, too. I spent 18 years in Chicago and paid property taxes there as a primary homeowner. And I always said, well, Sagatuck's always lower, but now Sagatuck's higher than many cases than Chicago residential properties from a tax standpoint. That's kind of mind blowing and especially for some new arrivals who are like, oh, my God, I was just, I was shocked at the property tax I'm paying. Now, that's an individual story, but I think that's something as an elected official, I'm going to be mindful of because this budget spends money in the right places based on what we've heard from the community and so forth. But I think we have to be thinking about, okay, how can we keep this where it is without? Money's not going up. I mean, we can only increase revenues and taxes and fees so much. We can't even increase the taxes. And I think we're going to see some dial backs on that. So that's something I think as a community, we need to be very aware of to tell our community that we're spending your money responsibly. More importantly, is there ways that we can actually reduce your tax burden? I know that there is. And also the projects, as you said, projects, 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 you could probably add 20 project words to that, right? I think something that I'm, well, something I'm sensitive to on this is, what is the actual time it's going to take you and city staff to actually deliver on these projects? We see a dollar figure, which really can't quibble with that. But what's the actual investment of time from the city staff to deliver on those? And I think that's something that needs to be factored into our calculus as we look at these projects. And maybe you've already done that. I'd like to see those numbers about what's the commitment that the city staff is going to need to make to have, for instance, the telecommunications line item, which absolutely I support. But what's going to be the city commitment, not just from a, you know, contracted standpoint, but legal standpoint, city staff standpoint? Those are costs that have to be, and it's a cost, it's ours. So I just put that out there as a cautionary item that we've talked about in our strategy sessions. We've said, we can only do so much with the staff that we have. So really, we have to be careful that we make sure we invest in the right areas. And I agree with Councilmember Dean that it's, you know, streets, water main, water and sewer. I mean, that's really where our focus should be. So anyway, I just put that out there as something I think we need to have have some more information on to make sure we can deliver on these projects at the end of the year. Because that seems something that always holds us up as we look back and say, well, we never got those projects done. Because the stuff comes out of left field, the unexpected can be expected, right? We don't even know what that's going to look like. Councilmember Dean's, you know, those four days of not having natural gas was really disruptive to the community. And those things are going to happen again, unfortunately. We just don't know what those are going to look like. But I really appreciate the work that's been put into this. I'd like to find a way to maybe get the community more engaged on this. I'm also very pleased that we're seeing this information this early in the process. Unfortunately, for the past several years, that has not been the case. So I really appreciate getting this information. It has, it gives me a chance to talk and think about this a little bit. There's some, there's some questions I'll have as we get further into this. But as a recommendation on additional budget workshops, other than the community one I mentioned, maybe we just put a, an item on our upcoming agendas and just say, one hour is going to be committed to budget discussion. And even at the council meetings, even though we wouldn't necessarily take action, I think we want to have public conversations about this. And I'm really interested to hear what other council members may be asking city staff regarding their questions about the budget. They may be thinking of questions I haven't thought of, and I may have questions others haven't thought of, too. So as much as I appreciate meeting with individual staff members to talk about those, I'd really love to hear what other council members are asking because that might help me make a better decision. So good work, I appreciate this. Thank you.
Great. I don't really have anything to add other than just to echo, thanks to all of the department heads. And to you, Ryan, this is a great presentation. Really appreciate that we have the information, you know, to digest and dig into more and great work. Got a lot ahead. Good.
Yeah, and if I could just echo, I appreciate your thanks of our our team here. And all of our staff have been hard at work on this for for many weeks. And we've got a lot of the spreadsheets and crossing out this and changing that. And 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 Nikki's been, you know, just doing a fantastic job of diving in and using past tools and updating, you know, existing tools and supporting each of the department heads and saying, hey, here's what, you know, how it looked in the in the past. And here's some, you know, so everybody's done just a fantastic job and I really appreciate the our team, so.
Great. So that takes us to the second public comment. Is there anyone online who wishes to make one? All right. No correspondence, correct? Council comments. Joe, you want to start with a council comment?
Good meeting. Thank you again for your patience and allowing me to take it virtually. Plan to be there on Monday. But yeah, no, I think, I think the level of of detail that was presented today is just over the top and is certainly going to help me. As I kind of wrap my my head around all this, it's certainly going to help me with, you know, going forward, recommendations on what, if anything, we need to either add or remove or whatever. I definitely am on board with the focus on infrastructure, you know, as we continue to look at the budget and our, more importantly, the capital projects. We plan to, programs, I should say, we plan to undertake. But anyway, I just want to thank everyone for engaging tonight. It was a really good meeting.
No additional comments other than saying thank you to the staff and the presentation was good today. Appreciate hearing about this and wanting, we'll have more conversations, I'm sure. Thanks.
Great, Scott.
Once again, I'd like to thank Ryan and staff for a wonderful budget presentation. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Clark, Mayor Protem Stanton. And I see Councilmember Muncie has joined the Zoom call. Thank you all for joining what I think was a very, very important workshop for us to to look at this budget. This is one of our core responsibilities. And so I really appreciate all of you finding a way to participate in today's discussion.
Yeah. Amen to all that. Great work, guys. And also appreciate the discussion around Baldhead. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
Hey, Ryan, can I?